Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Gastonia City Council, October 21st. And they're already talking Christmas here, sneaking up on us. But so glad to have everyone with us and also those that are watching by TV. I would like to, first of all, start off by asking the council and everyone to remember our many, many year clerk Jenny Creighton, whose father died Sunday, passed away, Mr. John Brack, funeral is Thursday. Also thank our deputy city clerk Regina Phillips for being here in Jenny's place. So certainly please remember the Brack family. And I'd like to ask at this time, the prayer be conducted by Councilman Dr. Dave Curling, after which we will all stand for pledge of allegiance to the flag. Dr. Curling?
Would you bow your heads with me, please? Lord, thank you for this beautiful day, for the sunshine that has shone down upon us. Thank you for allowing us to live in this wonderful country where we are free to speak as we please and exercise the many rights that we have as Americans. Lord, thank you for so many things that you've blessed us with, our families, our jobs, our loved ones around us, and as a city council and mayor, for us to be able to serve the citizens of Gastonia. Lord, a special thanks tonight for the folks from Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks, as well as Habitat for Humanity, for all they have contributed to our community. Watch over us, help us through our deliberations this evening, bless us, and may we be safe on our way home tonight. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of quick, well, let me just go ahead and have adoption of the agenda. Now, item 10 has been pulled from the file, from the agenda. Item 10 has, later, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. I'd like to have-
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that everyone in the audience understands item 10 involved Myers Memorial Church and New Hope Road, so that item has been moved, if anybody is here for that item.
Thank you. That is the New Hope Rodney Project and Myers Memorial. The approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 16th-
Semin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. I'm going to take just a moment before we go to item E for what, well, two things. One, I didn't know I was, but for a, asked for what we used to call in Raleigh, a point of personal privilege, and that's to get to say about anything you want to say for a minute or two. One that I didn't know I was going to say is, if y'all don't look too closely, but I cannot believe what I saw, that there's two more beards being grown over here, over here. I mean, I mean, it's just unbelievable, what's going on with the facial hair here. In all seriousness, I want to thank y'all for allowing me and working with me at the meeting of October 7th, when I had a little minor surgical procedure, which is super, but I did want to be part of the program and be, and listen to what's going on. But I did understand that there was, I've been told by several people, that the halls of, the walls of the city council, city hall, it was just a barking dog, that you heard dogs barking on there. Now, y'all are intelligent people, but I just wondered if you knew what the dog said to you, because, and if you didn't, I'm going to help you with that. I think probably most of you know the language. Mr. Bombley, put that up, and I'd like for the audience to see, this is what she was telling you that night, so just keep watching. There, there it is, right there. Now, any questions? Looking at our attorney's shirt and tie, but, and that, by the way, it looks just like her, but that's a picture. That's what she told you that night, I just thought she, she said it real quickly, but that's what's, thank you, thank you very much, sir. Perfect timing for it, so, okay. Item E is Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee, the Councilman Pierceall, we'll go with the first one, of proclamation recognizing Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks on its 25th anniversary.
Thank you. I'm going to sit down.
Getting hungry thinking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that Mr. Gerald Duncan is here to accept this on behalf of Hillbillies. If you don't mind coming forward, Mr. Duncan, we'll read this proclamation. This proclamation says, whereas in June of 1989, Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks was opened by Mr. Gerald Duncan at their first location on McAdenville Road in Lowell, North Carolina, and in 1991, as the business grew, the second location was opened on Garrison Boulevard in Gastonia, North Carolina. And from the beginning, Mr. Duncan's philosophy was to serve great food at affordable prices, and with the help of family and dear friends, Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks has continued to remain a place where family and food are very important. And for the last 25 years, Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks has been serving the Gaston County area with famous pork and beef barbecue, juicy steaks, award-winning ribs, and the delicious chicken that is cooked over an open flame pit with hickory wood, and the mouth-watering side dishes are made fresh every day and complement the meal. And throughout the years, Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks has demonstrated the importance of community service and has received numerous recognitions. In 2002, Hillbillies received a certificate of appreciation for providing food for the American Red Cross shelters and was honored as an American Red Cross hero. In 2004, Hillbillies supported the 9th Annual Gaston County Toy Run for Kids, and in 2006, Hillbillies sponsored the Highland School of Technology Golf Tournament, and Hillbillies has also been an Oasis contributor for several years. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John D. Bridgeman, Mayor of the City of Gastonia, do hereby congratulate Hillbillies Barbecue and Steaks on the occasion of their 25th anniversary and for their commitment and service to the community, and it is signed by the mayor, John Bridgeman. Congratulations, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say? Looking forward for another 25 years.
And at this time, I'd like to ask if the mayor would join me at the podium. We have an award for Habitat for Humanity.
And you can bring your counterparts with you, if you'd like. Yes, we'd like them. Okay. Mayor, don't be shy. No, she's not shy. Welcome, everyone. Todd and I, if I may, read the proclamation. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County was incorporated on December the 22nd, 1988, and officially affiliated with Habitat International in early 1989. And whereas Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County strives to eliminate substandard housing by providing affordable shelter to those in need in Gastonia and Gaston County. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County through partnerships with homeowners, volunteers, and sponsors, not only builds houses, but builds homes, relationships, and neighborhoods where families in our local communities are offered a better life, where children are safe, where property values increase, and crime is reduced, and where dreams of homeownership can become a reality. And whereas that there are many such havens in Gaston County because of the vision of Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County founders. Since 1989, Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County has completed 102 houses in Gaston County, 64 houses in Gastonia, 19 in Belmont, seven in Mahawali, three in Cherryville, two in Bessemer City, five in Dallas, and two in Lowell. And whereas the Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County Restore collects donations of household goods, furniture, and construction materials, and sells these gently-used items at affordable prices to our citizens. This provides Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County with a regular source of income, and the recycling prevents more than 50 tons of materials being dumped in the Gaston County landfills annually. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the City of Gastonia urge all members of the community to join Habitat for Humanity of Gaston County in this year's celebration of their 25th anniversary, and to honor our community's contribution to World Habitat Day observed on October the 6th, 2014. And witness whereof I have heretofore, here unto, set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed this, the 21st day of October in the year of our Lord 2014, John D. Bridgeman, Mayor, and attested to by Deputy City Clerk Regina Phillips. That's just a sample. I mean, we could talk on and on and on. That's quite a record. That is really remarkable, and it shows, it shows, and you've got wonderful people. But y'all have a wonderful executive director, too. Mary, I'd like to present this to you, and if there's anything you'd like to say, please, and like to introduce, just please make yourself at home.
Well, I just would like to say thank you to this council and to the City of Gastonia and to Gaston County. We would not do this great work without the support of all the people in this community. You know, I just think we've done wonderful things in the last 25 years, and, you know, as we continue, we hope we build 102 more houses in the next five years. You know, it's just wonderful to be able to support a community and have housing for people who are in need of housing. And to me, what it does for the community, what it does for people in general, is an amazing thing. So, you know, our board, you know, just, we thank them and the support that they give to this organization and to our whole community, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. And, you know, continue, everybody. I see faces out here that have touched our houses, I see people that have been former board members, and I even see the master gardeners here. I mean, even Gerald, you know, Hillbillies Barbecue's touched Habitat, and I know he's donated a lot of food to Habitat in the past, and so it's a wonderful organization, and, you know, but we couldn't do it without you and this community, and I just say thank you so much.
You want to say to the councilmen, if you'd go around, all of them, please, if you would, just go, they're waiting for you up there.
Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mary, keep up the great work. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for all your contributions. All right, good to see you. Absolutely. Hey, congratulations.
You know, once again, counselor, help me with this, I guess we need a motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Brenda Craig, she's out of town. Is there a motion to-
Semin.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand, please. And also, Mr. Mcateer is under the weather, but you're going to tune him in at the proper time he wants to-
That's correct, so let's not excuse him.
We have to excuse him, too.
No, we do not. We do not. We're going to call him, he'll-
Just call him, and he won't be excused. Okay, that's good. All right, and, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to recognize the proclamations for Hillbillies Barbecue and also for Habitat Humanity.
A second. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. I believe item F, the presentation, Mr. Bill Starr is not here. You want to comment for him, maybe he can come to the next meeting, too?
Yeah. Basically, Bill Starr is a Marine that does Toys for the Tots, and he's looking to start that up again. He wants to be able to put out boxes and that type of thing, so if you have his number and you're listening, please get in touch with him. The toys go to kids here in Gaston County. I know he helps with the least of these, and he also helps out with other organizations. His collections over the last two years have just multiplied, and it's just helped out a lot of needy kids. So hopefully, he'll be back at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Yeah, he'd be in full dress uniform. Okay. Thank you very much. We have one, under public expression, have one person that would like to speak. It's, each person is limited to a total five-minute speaking time, and speak what's on their mind, and of course, won't be any reaction from the council. Mr. Gary Leslie, 4052 Broadview Lane. Mr. Leslie.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, Councilman. Mr. City Manager, good to see you again. Thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes to address you. It's a great privilege. I've lived here in Gastonia for a couple of years, transplant from the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, and I came across a great word the other day, fulminate. And that's something I'm not going to do. I would like to maybe illuminate. I'm sure you get plenty of fulminating. I penned a story that the Gazette published earlier this summer called Angles and Energy, and it struck a favorable and positive tone about a lot of the activity and progress that I was sensing that was happening here in Gastonia and in the Gaston County area. And amongst those points I made, I used the metaphor, a flying metaphor, as a pilot, of angles and energy, and the need many times to take complex situations and break them down to their basics. And whether it's in business, I was privileged to run a business for 27 years, I had a background in aviation, this metaphor for angles and energy has served me well, because many times it's allowed me to look at things and break them down and try to understand them. And the culmination of my story ended up with some sentiments about our airport. And I'm a romantic, we have a romantic, quaint airport. But I also feel very strongly that we have a great and significant potential here that we are missing. And I felt a certain civic responsibility to at least bring my sentiments to the council. I've had the opportunity, Mr. Munn has been generous enough to give me some of his time out at the airport, Councilman Kimball has met with me. I feel strongly that we are missing an opportunity, and I'm not one to make a comment and not be able to support it or step up. Again, I feel that's part of my civic responsibility. And it's really not about airports. I see what we have here as the opportunity to develop what I call a portal to progress. If we focus on what we have in terms of a runway, an airport that was built one year after the end of World War II, and for all practical purposes is the same airport, and we look around us and our desire to compete, and we look at what's happening in a very close proximity at Lincoln Towne, at Shelby, at Concord, at Rock Hill. We see airports that have taken advantage of funding, that the FAA makes advantage of, takes, gives us access to our state, and I feel that we are missing a great opportunity to make Gastonia a tremendous location for expansion, for progress, for economic development. I've got some sentiments about our current location where our airport is, our opportunity to create something that would be unique and put Gastonia in a class of one. I felt strongly that I wanted to air these thoughts. I did not want to look back and have somebody say to me at some point, hey, Gary, did you ever address your city council? Did you ever share those thoughts with the people that, you know, care about these issues? So in this short amount of time, basically, I wanted to kind of put a punctuation mark to the story I wrote earlier in the summer, to have the opportunity to address you folks, to address the city in earnest, and to say, we have a great opportunity here because of our location, the progress I see taking place here in Gastonia, and if we don't get focused on airplanes and airports and think about a portal to progress to drive us where we want to be 10, 15, 20 years down the road, we can be in a class of one here. And I appreciate the chance to share those sentiments with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Not to respond directly to- Sorry. Not to respond directly to Mr. Leslie, but I would like to ask my associated members on the Transportation Committee if we can take a more wide view of what possibly the airport could do for us down the future as far as an income producer. I've had the good fortune to speak with Mr. Leslie and some other people, that I know it opened my eyes as to a number of the opportunities that are out there, and the ways in which the FAA and other federal agencies want us to succeed in a larger way. So I hope, gentlemen, that maybe at our next meeting, we can go ahead and take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we'll go ahead now into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Semin.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please. Raise your hand. Okay. Moving along to the, item nine, the regular agenda, resolution of support for a Blue Star Memorial marker, presentation by our own Pat Johnson. Gastonia, Gastonia beautiful, keep Gastonia beautiful, yeah, beautiful, keep Gastonia beautiful administrator. And is Monica going to be?
She will.
Okay.
I'm just going to introduce her. Keep Gastonia Beautiful has been working along with the Gastonia Council of Garden Clubs to acquire a designation for the Blue Star Memorial Highway. We have worked with various garden clubs for over 20 years on many beautification projects throughout our city. This particular project will be a significant commemorative tribute, and to present the actual specifics is Monica Haney, President of the Gastonia Council of Garden Clubs.
Okay. Yeah, she wants her backup.
Yeah, she does. She has garden club members here. Would you come here? Start the house. Okay.
Council members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the Gastonia Council of Garden Clubs and our three national affiliated garden clubs, the Four Seasons Garden Club, the Green Acres, and the Azaleas. First of all, I'd like to give you a brief history of the Blue Star Memorial Project, which is a national garden club program. At the end of World War II, there were many public-spirited groups who wished to honor the servicemen and women who had served so valiantly. In 1944, the New Jersey Garden Club Chairman, Mrs. Lewis Hall, and the roadside chairman, Mrs. Vance Hood, came up with an inspired idea. They wished to create a living memorial that would beautify the country for which these people had fought. these people had fought. They called their memorial consisted of 1,000 dogwood trees that were planted along a five-mile stretch of New Jersey Highway. They called this highway the Blue Star Road, okay? And they, the term "Blue Star" came from the prominent blue star that was on the service flag that was a symbol of pride and hope. The service flag hung in the front window of the homes of families that had a member that served during the war. It wasn't long before their project caught national attention, and in 1946, the National Garden Club adopted the Blue Star Highway Memorial Program. And by 1948, Mrs. Frederick Kellogg had designed a seven-foot cast aluminum marker with a prominent blue star and raised lettering that would identify these memorial plantings. The way the program worked was this: the garden clubs would purchase the sign and the plantings, and then the highway department would do the planting and do the maintaining of the site. This program took off, and by 1941, or, excuse me, '49, there were 31 states and 16,000 miles that were part of the Blue Star Highway Memorial Program. In 1951, the original mission of the Blue Star Memorial Program was broadened. At first, it was created to honor those who had served in World War II. At this point in 1951, it was broadened to include all those servicemen who had served, who were serving or will serve in the armed forces of the United States. Since 1981, two more markers have been added to the Blue Star Memorial Program. One is a small plaque which is meant to mount on stone or masonry and is used in parks or historical sites. The second is very similar to the highway marker, which is the seven-foot one, that is used to, with a little different wording, that is used at VA centers and also at national cemeteries. There are currently 2,574 Blue Star markers in the United States. There are 33 in the state of Mich, excuse me, of North Carolina. I'm forgetting where I live. In the state of North Carolina, and the one that we propose will be the first one in Gaston County. In the spring of this year, the garden club members voted to pursue the Blue Star Memorial Project as a council project. At that time, our goal was a plaque. We're not a very moneyed group, so we thought we could handle the plaque and have it mounted on a stone in either Leinberger Park or a location in downtown. When we were seeking approval for the site, I met up with Pat Johnson, who is incredible, and she helped guide us through the program. And then, all of a sudden, Ed Munn came on board, and everything blossomed. And he let us know that there was funding from the city that we could use to purchase a bigger marker, and he encouraged us to have Franklin Boulevard designated as a Blue Star Memorial Highway. Representative Baumgartner and Derek Smith have been most helpful in getting 74 designated as a Blue Star Highway, and this is still in process. We're currently ready to order the sign, and our next goal is to plan an appropriate and patriotic dedication for May of 2015. In all of this, I would love to thank Pat Johnson, Ed Munn, the City of Gastonia, Representative Baumgartner, and Derek Smith for their guidance, for their financial support, and their enthusiasm in this project. I'd also like to thank all the members of our garden clubs who voted to take on this project. And in final, in here as an ending to this little presentation, I'd like to speak for all of us. And it's my hope, it's our hope, that when our servicemen who have served so selflessly and willingly to, for our country, that when they look upon this sign, that they will, or this memorial, that they will feel our deep appreciation for their dedication to protecting our freedom. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Monica. Any questions or comments?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
Do you happen to have a picture of that that we could put up and show people what it looked like at home?
Here it is.
Oh, there it is? Oh, we just have it up there? Okay. I see it now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question? Yes, sir. What, was that just one?
Have you determined where this marker is going to be placed?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's going to be at Franklin and Marietta.
Perfect. Will Fargo. Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we accept the Blue Star Memorial and really be really grateful for putting initiative forward a whole bunch. Thank you, ladies and all. This is excellent, especially for armed service people. Really, to remember, to memorialize this, especially on Franklin Boulevard, it's excellent. Thank you.
Second. Okay. Discussion? Anymore? All in favor, please? Raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me say, great words that you said, and especially as we talked about Pat Johnson, who's listening to Flip right now. But we'll get her in a second. Pat, in behalf of the council, certainly, we, our hearts have been with you in the last little while, and we're thinking of you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you. Well, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Pat, I saw you out there with a bunch of ladies planting the pansies downtown. Were some of these ladies there?
Yeah.
That was really, really nice.
This master gardener group is phenomenal. They help us with Yard of the Week. They help us with different beautification projects. And Monday, yesterday, we had 12 that planted all the pansies downtown. We planted 45 flats of pansies downtown yesterday. So hats off to them. They're always there. They never hesitate to help us, and we couldn't do our work without them. So we appreciate them, and thank you for recognizing them for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. You want me to wait a second?
Mr. McAtier, can you hear us?
Very good.
So we're on.
Okay. Councilman, you can hear us, okay, can't you?
Can you hear us? Did you hear?
Oh, yes, I hear you very well.
All right. Item 11 is a transitional operations agreement for the Gastonius Conference Center and Budget, a presentation by Mr. Ed Munn, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have been working with Mr. Julius, his firm, Stellar Platinum, which is now organized as Gastonius Conference Center LLC, to develop a transitional agreement. And that agreement is included in your agenda. We'll go through that. I want to thank Flip Bombardier and Melody Brady and Christie Crisp, who have labored, as well as Ash Smith, who have labored on the details of this. It's a complicated matter when we're doing a transition contract and we're moving from one management team to another. But all the way through this, we have, to the customers of the conference center, you know, that's where our commitment is. This is what we talked about the other night, and that remains our entire focus, that there may be changes in your management team from time to time, but the quality and the manage, the way that the conference center presents itself will always be done in a very quality way, and we will be committed to our customers. Now, the, as we have gotten more information on the bookings, and this, some of this is the software that we just received, it's clear that probably November and December will not be as strong a month as perhaps the budget that you have in front of you, whether it's the one that, you know, we've developed previously with the city staff or whether the one you're looking at with Mr. Julius. It is the work that is done today at a conference center, really, whatever you're, it's almost like planting a garden. When you're doing the good work now, it will actually come, the plants will pop up two or three, four, five, or six months later. So a lot of the work that we will be doing and the success for the conference center with, working with Mr. Julius's firm, that will be evident in the spring. So one of the things that we are talking about is that there is a fund balance in our, in the, in the fund, the conference center fund of $75,282. That money is a fund balance. We would like to convert that to a contingency, so as we move forward, that we'll be able to use those funds as necessary. We have a pretty good handle on expenses. The revenues are really the question. As you go forward, the more successful you are with a conference center and the more customers you get, whether it's a business customers or all of the folks from our own community and people outside, that's really what's going to drive this conference center. To that, to that end, if, look at the budget, or, excuse me, the agreement. If you look on page three of the agreement, one of the things that's a little different from what we've done before is there is an event deposit account. Previously, the event deposits were mixed with all other revenues. We're separating that so that that can be accounted for, and this is so that if you're getting a deposit for an event that will be held later on, that those funds are segregated. Also, on page five, this talks about actions to be taken at the conclusion of this agreement. This is a transition agreement. This transition period starts November the 1st and runs to June 30th. So that, there are specific, and there are very specific wording here about how this contract would end and what is, what is in that. The budget is set forth on page seven, and this is section 6.1. And within this, within this structure is where we would have the potential, if necessary, if we have to use that contingency money during the next, from now till June, that we would be able to use those funds. And if you move forward to the, to the end of the contract, towards the page 13, we discuss about the termination clauses, 60-day termination clause, 30 days with any kind of cause default. The monthly communications, which we think are really important, the same information that you've received with regard to events, and also with regard to the finances, will still go to city council. We're also recommending that we work with the facilities committee and have that facilities committee meet regularly with the management company and with the city staff as we go forward. So in moving in this direction, we would, if the motion would come forward to approve this, the wording that we would like to have would follow like this. A motion to approve the contract is shown in exhibit 11, subject to any final modifications as approved by the city's legal department. This motion also includes authorization to process applicable budget amendment through the city's finance department, setting up an additional contingency account in the amount of $75,282 for the utilization as needed through this transition period. Staff is further directed to report monthly to the city facilities and management committee on the ongoing transition process. And with that, the staff and the city attorney and I are here to answer any questions council may have.
Questions, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ed or Ash, my recollection is that in addition, we also voted to have the ability at our discretion to use a consultant corporation or entity to further analyze the conference center operations at any point during this process. Is that something that needs to be in here, or, I'm just, wasn't certain?
It's there, and I think we can, it's still active, and I think anytime we want that, that as a resource, we can move forward.
Okay. Does this not have to be?
It does not have to be mentioned there. We can do it anytime we need to.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Your son.
Mr. Munn, having been through this one time before, and certainly don't want to make it sound like I'm speaking disparagingly about Sterling Silver, if we don't like the performance, what does it cost us to get out of this? Bottom line, what's the cost?
Well, there is no early termination fee in this contract. It's an eight-month transition agreement. You know, we're responsible for paying the salaries of the staff.
So two months into it, if we're not happy, we can?
It's 60-days termination notice, and we would pay what is owed in terms of salaries.
Okay. I just didn't see anything in there, so I didn't know if there was.
Well, it's such a short term, we took all of that out. We'd get to, you know, June 30th, July 1st. Obviously, we'll be negotiating something coming up to that that will be different, but this is a very short-term transitional agreement for eight months, so there's no need for early termination fees in a document like that.
Good with? Galen?
Just one question on, I don't know if it's aimed for you, Ed, or Fred Julius, but break-even point, is it a number of shows or is it an amount of money per month?
Break-even for the conference center?
Yeah.
Yeah. Break-even for a conference center would, would involve particularly working on the revenue side of the ledger, because you can only cut expenses so far to operate that facility. You have a base, a, I think actually, the Wilderman Group probably operated in terms of, on the expenditure side, about as cheaply as they could. But I think it's the revenue side where the opportunities are. And if you're ever going to get close to break even, and many centers never get to break even, but that's always been our goal. I mean, we would like to do that. But it is getting that center operating during the week and on weekends, and there are many times right now when there aren't any activities. It's a beautiful facility, and it's a wonderful asset to the city, and I think that's where the direction that I think Mr. Julius needs to focus his attention. I believe that that's where he's headed, and he could speak to that, I'm sure. But that's, that's, that would be the direction, and I think even when we've had consultants talk to us, that's what they say, too. That's what you've got to focus on, is getting activity and, and working on the revenue side of the equation.
Is there anything for us to entertain Gaston College using some of those side rooms for classrooms at all for downtown? That would bring people to downtown to allow business to happen and help flourish? I don't know if you entertain that idea, but it's just something I wanted to put out there.
Absolutely. I think, you know, there, any group that you can get to operate, to utilize those meeting facilities, you should go after. Absolutely.
Dave?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Munn, the travel and tourism folks, at one point, were offering some funding for an additional sales position. Where does that fit into this contract or this equation?
It's, it's separate from it, and that, that was to focus on weekend activity and primarily to fill the hotels up for weekend activity, and also, they would be housed in the conference center itself. But it would, it was a special sales effort to, to go after weekend, weekend functions.
Will that be implemented after this contract is?
Yes, we believe so. I mean, that was, that was the direction, and we will, once the new management team gets in the center, then we will be then moving with that as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, I think where you were kind of going with, with your question, it's my understanding in speaking to an independent consultant, and I think maybe Mr. Julius could speak to this more in-depth than, than my knowledge, is that there is a break-even point for X number of events with X number of patrons attending that event, spending a certain level for food and drink. And there's a, my understanding is there's an X on it. And there's a, my understanding is there's an X on, on the page where, once we get there, and I don't know, Fred, you probably know that number better, that's when we move forward into the black from being, from being in the red. So, a lot of it is transitional in how big the event is, what the event type is, how much they spend, you know, it could be something, you're indicating, like, maybe a meeting is not going to be as much as, say, a wedding or an anniversary party or something like that. But Fred, do you want to speak to that at all?
Sure.
I think that'll give us a little bit more clarity, but there is a formula for that.
Thanks, Will.
My early budget reviews and forecasts show us at approximately $56,000 in gross revenue per month, per month would, would break the month even, and so that is our goal. As Mr. Kimball said, you know, you have to have that complete mix. You have to have the weekly, the weekly conference business, you need to have the weekend weddings, and putting, like, in a hotel business, putting heads in beds. We need to fill the conference center.
Bodies and rooms, that's kind of where we need to be, and plates in front of folks is, is where I think we need to be. But thank you, that's, that's what I was looking for, I didn't know that number. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. And just bear with me, because I'm just making sure I understand every step of this process, because I don't want to do it again, and I don't want to mess it up like it was before, so bear with me. We negotiated to get out of the contract with the Wilderman Group, correct? And we paid a certain fee to, to end that contract. We asked staff to look at a temporary managing group that would take that on, but part of what we negotiated with the Wilderman Group was to have the current manager of the facility released from a non-compete clause. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, if the current manager is still available to us and can continue the operations of the center uninterrupted, why are not we not weighing those two options together? Why are we not weighing continuing under the current manager with this option presented here tonight as to hiring another firm? Are we not going to be paying this firm a management fee similar, I mean, it may not be the same amount, but similar in, in the type that we paid to the Wilderman Group? Obviously, we're paying this firm a certain amount of money to come in and manage. We would not be paying the current manager if he was a city employee, correct? We wouldn't be paying a management fee. And I guess I'm boiling it down to, when we asked staff to look at this, certainly this is an option. Since then, a second option has come up and available to us, but we're not seeing that in writing here. So, we're going to be voting on one of two options that we have without reviewing the second option, and I think that's what we didn't like the first go-around when we were presented with the Wilderman Group renewing that contract. We didn't like the fact that there were other options out there, and we weren't getting to review them. We were presented with one. Are we not in the same situation here tonight in that we have several options, but we're only reviewing and voting on one?
I think, I think they, they sent out a sheet that said that if they bring it in-house, the city's going to be charging $28,000 more. Plus, we're going to be hiring extra employees, which goes along with healthcare, goes along with 401Ks.
So, the bottom line is this is the most inexpensive way to handle this? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I think it's more private. I mean, do we really want to bring it in-house? I myself want to keep it on the outside to allow private business to run it, so private business will gain money, have an incentive.
I want to do what's the most inexpensive for the taxpayer, because that's who's footing the bill. That's where my concern is.
Yeah, well, my concern, yeah, my concern is there too, Todd, but the one problem is, do we want to bring it in-house and have government run it, or do we want to have private industry run it? I've, I might, I for one want private industry to run it, and, you know, by them putting out that if we brought it in-house, it'd be $28,000 more now, and with government, anything escalates. I mean, there's not an incentive to rent it out afterwards, once you bring it in-house. I think private industry itself has, Fred has the best interest so he can make some money, and that's the driving force behind it, instead of just being, oh, well, this is my job, and I get paid whether I rent it or not. So, that's, that's my feeling on it, that's all.
Just for some background, when, when the council, we, we had meetings in, in August and, and July and August, and in the August meeting, the council asked for options, short-term and long-term options, and the council selected the option of Mr. Julius's firm and requested the staff do the negotiations for up to a year, and we talked about transition and, and permanent. So, then later, there got to be the negotiations with, with Wilderman, Mr. Wilderman, and there were the releases. One of the options at the time for the council was the city operating it, I think I gave the council maybe four or five different options. We could go out for a large RFP, we could combine the options, in fact. And so, we've been working under the direction of the council to negotiate with, with Mr. Julius's firm. We also have provided information to you that, that, and I think I may have, I keep using this baseball analogy, that essentially, the city's the backstop. You know, if, if, if there isn't a firm there to work the conference center, then the city will do it. I mean, the city operates the Schule Museum, and we, we can do that. With regard to who can do it less, in a less expensive manner, when we looked at some numbers, and in fact, as you can tell, I've had conversations with the members of city council and also provided you information, notice the numbers are changing a bit. It's because the forecast and forecasting these revenues and exactly where we're all going to be, is you can, you can do that, you know, forever. I think we're, we're pretty close. I think the city could operate it pretty close in, in terms of costs to the private sector. I think the private sector always brings an entrepreneurial spirit to it. I, I think that that's always one of the advantages the private sector has. City's advantage tends to be accountability. You know, you're, you're, if you have it in-house, you know what, you know what you have. You're, you're just, and you, you are more directly in control. So, I think anytime you're looking at public versus private, that's the, that's the kind of debate, but we brought it back to the city council because the council requested us to negotiate with Mr. Julius.
Two different things that I wanted to ask you that may not sound too important, but, and just leaving people out of it altogether, but I, would it be a fair assumption that anyone that would enter into this agreement would, it would, they would want to, if it's a transitional eight months, at the end of those eight months, they would like to be the knight in shining armor to keep going and to continue, I'm not just Fred, but anyone?
Yeah, you would certainly think so.
Yeah. And how does this affect, or is there any effect on the ABC license?
With the ABC license, whether the city would operate it, the city would have to get the license if Mr. Julius's firm is operating it, he has to get a separate license. Yes, there has to be a, whoever's operating the conference center has to have, have the ABC license.
Questions? Anybody? Yes, sir.
Just a little bit of a, I'm going to be back with Porter on the phone. To kind of go a little bit further on your comment, Mr. Mayor, I think that you're exactly right. At the end of the day, be it Mr. Julius's firm or another one, really gets the chance to either sink or swim, and that's a double-edged sword, and I think Mr. Julius knows that and understands that. And secondly, I, I feel very strongly that we need to look at cost, but I think that we also need to look at efficiency and the potential for success as well as cost. I think that all of those things factor together. Sometimes, I've found in my life, and I think we've found different times with our elected body here, sometimes cheapest is not always the best, and the result that you get is not always, and sometimes you wish maybe you spent a little bit more, did things a little bit differently to get a better result. So, that's, that's my perspective on that.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion, sir.
Porter, he's still there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say?
Ask him if he have any question.
Mr. McEachran, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, motion?
I will make the motion, Your Honor. I will make it reflective of what Mr. Munn outlined during his summation of the contract. It was too, I think, too much to go into detail. Make the motion to approve the contract as shown in exhibit 11, subject to any final modifications as approved by the city's legal department. This motion also includes authorization to process applicable budget amendment through the city's finance department, setting up an additional contingency account in the amount of $75,282 for utilization as needed through this transition period. Staff is further directed to report monthly to the city council's facilities and management committee on the ongoing transition process. Will be my motion. Thank you.
Could you repeat that?
Yes, I will, sir.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion? All in favor? And Porter, you can just say it.
Mr. McEachran, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Opposed? Okay. It, it does pass. Okay, item 12. Ordinance amending the charter of the City of Gastonia to modify the mayor and council members' terms of office to provide for a two-year term for the office of mayor and staggered four-year terms for city council. The presentation, city attorney, Mr. Ash Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and tonight is the final step, if council so chooses, with regard to changing the charter so that we have staggered terms for the city council and a two-year term for the mayor. You had the public hearing at your October 7th meeting, and so the matter is before you tonight, for the pleasure of the council, the way that the language of the charter would be changed to reflect all those changes is in your agenda, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Smith?
I, I have one, and Mayor Fuel indulged me for one minute. I know we have Councilman McEachran on the phone, so that's good. We are missing Councilwoman Craig, and I don't think it's necessarily going to change the outcome, but I know Councilwoman Craig really wanted to participate in this discussion and could not because of her location, and I know we've extended this courtesy, courtesy to some other council members. I would like to make a motion that we continue this item and put it on the agenda for our next meeting and actually not take a vote this evening.
Okay, there's a motion. That is a motion.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a question? I mean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. McEachran, any discussion?
Oh, come on.
Yeah, is that, is that your discussion?
I'm opposed to putting it off.
Well, you have a good chance to vote. Okay. Any other, yes, sir.
I think it's, I think it's worthy of a little bit of discussion, you know, because I know we've set precedent in the past to have council members be able to express their vote. Probably my only concern is I'm getting old and my memory fails me exactly as to the process we've used in the past, because I know typically, the council person who was making that request, I seem to have heard it from them, I guess, maybe prior to the meeting in question, and unless you're speaking officially on her behalf at her request, which, I assume you are, Councilwoman Pierceall?
No, she is, she did not request that I make this motion.
I see, okay.
In conversations with her, she did indicate that she wanted to be present for the discussion, was not going to be able to.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't think it's going to change the outcome, but I think it, like I said, we've extended that courtesy to others, and I know she wanted to participate in the conversation, so.
I would just say that the purpose of this vote is because it requires two votes, and in certain cases, when we, you know, had two votes, we really haven't always had additional discussion for the second vote, and the fact that Councilwoman Craig did not specifically request this postponement or continuance.
This, this is the first vote, because you couldn't vote on it at the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this is the first reading.
I told you I was getting old.
Yeah, this is the, this is technically the first reading, because this is a wrinkle in the statute that says you can't vote on it at the same meeting as the public hearing, so this is the first.
That's right, that's right, okay. So, and for clarification purposes, all right, does this require a two-thirds majority vote?
On the first reading, it does. So, if it, if it were to pass by two-thirds tonight, it would be, in effect, absent a petition submitted, you know, overturning it. If it does not pass on this first reading, or at the next meeting, if you continue it and it, that, that will be the first reading as well, because it's the first vote. If it was to be a 4-3 vote, that would require a second reading at the second meeting in November. Are you following me?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
So, if this is voted down, the table, if this is voted down, then we vote on the ordinance itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the second reading, the second reading would be at our November 1st meeting?
If, well, there's six people tonight, okay? So, if it's, if it's defeated, it's defeated. If it's 3-3, it's defeated. If it's 4-2, it's going to pass, and there won't be a second reading.
Okay.
Because that's two-thirds.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'm sure everybody's got that. Any other discussion? Okay, there is a motion on the floor to move the, this, to vote on this at the first meeting in November.
Yes, sir.
With all members here. And there's a second. Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please.
And Mr. McEachran, it was a 2-4 and 3 against. How do you vote, Mr. McEachran?
Yeah, I'm opposed to delay it.
So, that motion fails 2-4.
Is there a motion?
To approve or not?
Any other discussion?
Whatever the wishes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one of our voting now, this.
There's, there's not a motion yet, Mr. McEachran. There's not a motion.
Okay.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Now, discussion, anyone? Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand.
How do you vote, Mr. McEachran?
I vote to approve.
All opposed?
I vote.
All right.
It is approved.
It is approved, and that's all for that item, Mr. Mayor.
I guess it's two-thirds, whatever.
Yes, sir, that's two-thirds, so it will not be on the agenda again.
Okay.
All right. And we're through with you, Mr. McEachran. We'll let you go, hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Let's see, have a report.
Okay, that's item 12, and we're moving right along. It's Councilman Pierceall, is item 13, the facilities management committee report, which is number 13 in the, in your agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the absence of Councilwoman Craig, who chairs the facilities management committee, I will be giving that report for her. Item number one is offered to purchase 504 Chestnut Street, partial identification number 109798, and 506 Chestnut Street, which is partial identi, ID number 109799, and the city received an offer to purchase the property at 504 and 506 South Chestnut for $1,000 each by Mr. Brian Dalton. The parcels are approximately .43 and .40 of an acre with tax values of $4,214 and $3,920 respectively. The properties were purchased in 1994 as part of the Chestnut Street Alignment Project, and at this time, the Chestnut Street project has been removed from the road improvement li- And at this time, the Chestnut Street project has been removed from the road improvement list, and the properties have not been listed as surplus due to the possibility of development in the area. If approved, the city would retain a general drainage, utilities, and sidewalk easement, along with temporary sidewalk construction easement. And this offer is subject to the upset bid process. It should be noted that in the committee's discussions, they're, part of these, both of these parcels are in a flood plain, and building on them is going to be challenging somewhat. Therefore, the, the low price, the city has no plans for these properties, and it's, this is simply a way to get it back on the tax rolls. Mr. Dalton has expressed an, an interest in building on these properties, so that's going to be a considerable expense to him, dealing with the flood plain and so forth. So the committee recommended 2 to 0 to approve the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for sale of property at 504 South Chestnut Street and 506 South Chestnut Street.
You have the motion?
And I would like to make that in form of a motion that the council approve this as well.
Mr. Second?
I'll second here, sir.
All right. Discussion? All in favor? Please your hand.
All right. And item number two is, again, an offer to purchase. It's for Candlewick Way, parcel identification number 140962. The city received an offer to purchase a lot on Candlewick Way for $100 by the Planters Ridge Homeowners Association. And the property had originally been retained for future street right-of-way, but is currently only used for pedestrian access between two neighborhoods there. Current tax value of the property is $1,656, and the lot size is .012 of an acre. If approved, the city would retain a general drainage, utilities, and sidewalk easement. And this offer is also subject to the upset bid process. You'll see in your agendas, a little map, this is basically a sidewalk with some bushes. The homeowners association for the Candlewick neighborhood would like to purchase this. Currently, the city does the maintenance on this. This would take the maintenance responsibility off the city and put it on the homeowners association. And there again, turn, even though it's a very tiny piece of property, I'll take it off of the city and put it back into private tax rolls. So again, the committee voted 2 to 0 to approve the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of property at Candlewick Way. And I would like to offer that in the form of a motion for the council's approval as well, please.
Second.
Second motion? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Please, raise your hand. It's unanimous.
And the final item that we had, Your Honor, was item number three, which was the follow-up discussion on donation of property at 2749 South York Road, parcel identification number 114851. The committee had heard some discussion on this property earlier. The owner was willing to donate that to the city. It does, you can see in your agenda, maps on that, and it, it does adjoin in certain sections some property owned by the county. And therefore, we were interested in seeing if that property could be utilized. We had our Parks and Rec Department, as well as some other city staff, look into that, if there was a possibility of working something with the county, or maybe a sometime pocket park, anything the city could do, you know? You don't want to, to turn away a gift. Unfortunately, because of the topography of the land, this is basically one huge gully. Parks and Rec has said that they can find no use for this, including a bike trail. They said the, the topography's not even good for a bike trail. So at this time, the city has no use for this. We feel like it would be a maintenance issue, very tough to maintain, very tough to mow, keep clean, and we don't want to take on that responsibility. So the committee voted unanimously 2 to 0 to not accept the donation of the property at 2749 South York Road. And I'd like to bring that forward in the form of a motion for the council also to not accept this property.
Second?
Second here.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. And I should have noted that the reason the votes were 2 to 0 is Mr. Curlin was not able to make our, our committee meeting, and we knew that ahead of time. We had some problems with scheduling between the three of us, and we excused Mr. Curlin from that meeting. But that is the reason for the 2 to 0 votes on these. So wanted to point that out, that we did excuse Mr. Curlin from that. And that's the end of my report.
That's it. Okay. Thank you, sir. Item 14, city attorney's report. Mr. Smith?
The mayor's already drawn attention to my tie, so I just want to say another shout out to all the breast cancer survivors out there. You never know who they are and where they are, but we do appreciate them. And Councilwoman Craig's not here tonight, but she's always a big fan of this tie, and this is for her and all the other ladies out there. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Item 15, city manager's report. Mr. Munn?
No report.
Who? Okay.
He's playing. He's give out.
He's playing. He's playing.
Actually, I, I could give a report, but no.
No, you don't have to. But thank you, sir. City council report?
Just, very quickly, Mayor, it is breast cancer awareness, and I would like to mention my mother, who is a survivor, Nancy Pierceall. She is cancer-free and a survivor, and certainly very important to me. And the only other thing I have is the mayor's youth leadership council has started back up. We have a fine group of, of young people starting that, and we had great attendance at, at the second, actually, second meeting yesterday. They had a kind of get-to-know-each-other icebreaker session on Sunday, and they're going to be doing some wonderful things in the community this school year. Very, very eager group this go-around. So I look forward to bringing you some items, along with the mayor, that will be participating in that. So good group of kids, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Just two things. One, I have a picture in the back of, I don't know if it's there, if they could, there it is. That's me walking my daughter Caroline down the aisle back in September. It was a great time, and we just learned last Thursday that she has passed her Virginia Bar Exam, and she is now an attorney. So big, big things going on. My condolences. Thank you, Ash. Appreciate that. And that is my report, sir. Thank you.
Were you crying? Okay. Dr. Curlin, we've been there, haven't we?
That's right. Well, I just want to take personal privilege to wish my daughter, Madeline, happy birthday, and she will have that birthday on Halloween.
Ooh, spooky. Good.
It was spooky for her mother that night, too. But that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Kim?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple, a couple items. First, Rusty, could you come up, please? I just wanted to give some really well-deserved congratulations to all the folks involved in the remediation project for the creek, which is a tributary to the Dewheart Creek. And I believe that's our first public-private partnership that we've moved forward on. And to the delight of all the residents, it's, I believe it's complete now, Rusty. So tell us a little bit about that.
Yes, sir. That, that's one of the, the stormwater assistance projects that our, our stormwater utility offers. And as you'll recall, the, the program went through a little bit of a modification a while back, and it became more of a, a public-private partnership type of a scenario. And this was our first one. It involved four property owners. They each had a lot of erosion in their backyard, and this involves a lot of slope stabilization and Armstrong branch.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the folks that worked diligently there and gave the homeowners some relief. And I'm going to throw it back to you. What was it, about 12, 12 years in the making, I believe?
Yeah. Right. I, I think it's somewhere around 10 or 12.
Right. Thank you. The second item, flip, we've, I've gotten some requests from the residents in the area of Aubrey Street, the soccer field there. Can we ensure that after the games, we get our facilities folks by there to empty the trash cans? Apparently, they get real full on the weekends, and some of the animals get in, and the, the trash is going into a lot of the neighborhood yards. They're open trash cans, barrels, actually. And also the gate there, I visited that area today, the gate also needs repair. It's, it's somewhat broken. I don't know whether it, actually, it can be repaired. Third item, we had a wonderful police community meeting. You were missed, Your Honor, at the Bradley Center. Chief, thank you for attending with your new assistant chiefs. And also Mr. Mark McNeil, a member of our Rental Remediation Program Committee, attended as well and brought forth some, some excellent ideas for the committee. Lastly, Gaston County Cancer Services, last night was their dinner and silent auction. They raised $1,500, and the folks at Round Bistro donated 15% of their net proceeds for the night to Cancer Services as well. And last shout-out, please save the date. April 24th, 2015 is going to be the Faces of Hope Dinner and Silent Auction, et cetera. Venue that we're very close to announcing, we're not going to announce it yet tonight, but the date is, I'm told, carved in stone. So that's, that's something that's very exciting, and I was the, very fortunate to be the top bidder last night on being able to go on the John Boy and Billy radio show in the morning. So I'm going to be really looking forward to that, and I don't now have a date yet, but I also got three great bottles of barbecue sauce and a signed John Boy and Billy picture. So I was ecstatic over that. That's my report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Helton, anything you want to say about the sniper conference this weekend?
The, the competitors from all around the United States, including a couple of teams from Canada, are all arriving into town. The Sniper Conference kicks off Wednesday, goes through Saturday, and it is open to the public. Saturday is usually the day the public likes to come out. That's when they do the obstacle course, and you see all the teams participate and run that, and then fire some shots from over there at the tower at the range. But a great time. There's also some events there for the children and, and young people to participate. But we'd love to invite anyone that would like to, to come, to come out. Yes.
That's a question.
Forty hours.
It, Saturday, it's, it's 8 to 2. Yes.
Chief, what's the cost?
It's, it's no cost. And parking can be tough out there at the range, but we do have shuttles to shuttle people up the hill. There's parking down below by the lake, and then we'll shuttle people, people up to the range where the events are happening.
So it's out at Rankin Lake?
Yes.
And the other question I have is, the little kids, do they shoot 22s or so?
There's a 22 rimfire shoot that will be happening, where young people can compete in that, and also a pellet shoot as well, pellet gun shoot.
And the gentleman that runs that, he's from Clemson or so, and he instructs the students?
Yes.
This fire safety arms?
Yes.
And is that free also?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say our team was practicing today.
Our team wasn't practicing, but they were running through the events to make sure everything was operating smoothly. Yes.
I'd say I, I heard that today. So in my house, you can hear the, the gun range, and today it was particularly, particularly active.
Yes.
Were you staying low today underneath the windows?
How many teams are coming?
I believe it's 48 teams.
Wow.
And now our teams do not compete?
Our teams are the host, so we'll host the event, and we do not compete. That's correct.
Thank you, Chief.
And the guy in charge, Clemson? Rusty's listening to that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, sir, Chief. Special thank you, Ash, as Todd said about his mother, of course, Nan being a survivor, which is a wonderful thing. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and if there's a motion to adjourn. Okay, so let's go. Thank you.
Turn that. Yeah. Thank you, sir.[1729.11]